Okay, it's 5:30. I'll call a meeting to order. Would you call roll call?
Councilperson Bernie, yes, here. Bernie. Councilperson Perry.
Present.
Councilperson McGinty.
Here.
Councilperson Hanson.
Would someone make a motion, please, to suspend the voting procedure for this evening till later? Okay?
I'll make a motion to suspend the voting procedures.
Is there a second to that? Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the voting procedure for this evening's meeting. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Perry.
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty.
Yes.
Councilperson Bernie.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Do any of the councilpersons have any conflict of interest on anything on the agenda this evening?
Nope.
Okay. Then it's my pleasure to introduce from Blue Space Emily Bush and Blake Argit Singer. And I'm sorry, the lady that just walked in, I'm not familiar with her.
Chantel Grove.
Pardon me?
Chantel Grove.
Sean.
And we'll introduce, we have another team member coming to make introductions.
Well, you are on.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, thanks. Due to our technology here, we're gonna sit and present when we're speaking, so I apologize for having my back to you a little bit. Can you see the screen?
No.
Okay. But yeah, real briefly, we're happy to be back. I believe it was almost a year ago that a few members of our team came to speak about the benefits of branding, what a brand was and why you all should pursue it, and we're really pleased that we're to this point now. We've spent, I don't know, three to four months, I think it has been, doing some in-depth research, a brand assessment, and then developing some strategic recommendations. And we'll take you through a little bit more of those things in a minute. I am Emily Bush, the Managing Director at Blue Space Creative. Blake Argit Singer is our Lead Strategist. We call him a brand catalyst at our agency. Chantel is a brand specialist. She really works a lot with copywriting and public relations at our agency. And then Nick Ingram is gonna be joining us momentarily too. He's another brand manager at Blue Space, so. And then we, of course, left a whole team of people back in Dennison that have been working on this. Some of our designers who will be engaged with you in the next phase of this project as we move into the positioning and logo design and things like that. But just know that we've had a big crew working on this project. So tonight, what we're hoping to accomplish, and Adam or Barb chime in too if you have some things you wanna share. But I think we're here tonight to share our findings and then also, like I mentioned, our recommendations for messaging and marketing the community. It's a very comprehensive report. We're actually using the report to move through all of this information. So we're gonna give you the highlights this evening. We have three hard copies that we've, we're making available to Adam and Barb and Randy who've been on the committee. And obviously, there'll be electronic copy that we can share with you, Adam, that you can distribute. There's a lot to digest. There's, I think, the report's about eighty pages, and there's also a sixty-nine page addendum with some of the research. The responses to a bunch of the survey questions particularly that is included in that addendum. So anyway, we're gonna try to keep our presentation between sixty to ninety minutes, so we don't keep you all too long. But it is a lot to digest, so we'll leave you with, again, some top-line thoughts and then let you take a look at the report. And I think our understanding is that we'll convene at a later date to really focus on our next steps. Although, we're happy to take questions tonight.
Emily, would you like to have questions at the end, rather than be interrupted in the middle?
That would probably be ideal, just to keep us moving. There's a lot, there's some overlap during our presentations, so questions you might have may be answered later on. So yeah, that would probably best, be best, thanks. So. Okay. Well, I can just move into, this is the table of contents in the report. But again, what we're gonna cover tonight is primarily take you through our information gathering, which we're terming the assessment, and we'll review our research methods shortly. Just please know a couple of things. We've done a lot of these assessments, and they're really designed to bring out both the positive and the negative in your community. So, you know, you're gonna see just a lot of comments that go both ways, and that's completely normal. That's, again, that's what these are designed to do. Ultimately, we're really trying to get to the core of who Sac City is. And we'll talk a little bit about a brand in a second, just to recap, in terms of how that defines a community. Following the assessment, we'll cover the strategy. And again, sharing ideas that support certain guideposts that can guide the community, in our opinion, so. Without further ado, this is sort of an executive summary of our report, but we wanna talk about community branding briefly. Branding in general, like what is a brand? It's not something that we come in and develop for you, or that we decide this is who Sac City's going to be. You already have a brand. It lives in the minds and hearts of people that are here and that have visited. You know, it's experiences that they've had. It's ways they've engaged with you. The question that we're really asking is how effective is the brand for you all in accomplishing what you want it to do? And that's our job, to evaluate and make strategic recommendations for how to move forward with your brand. So taking a, just a really high-level look at who Sac City is, this is without any research. This is just on the face of everything what you had, you all had shared with us, kind of when we came into the project. So again, we know the population is around twenty-two hundred. The Raccoon River is here, a valuable natural asset in the community. The Sac County Sea hosted a fair. You're a designated National Street Iowa community, and of course, home to the historical Chautauqua Building. So just some real top-level observations that we wanted to note as qualities of the community. In terms of challenges, as many small towns are facing an aging, declining population, a lot of people mentioned the new Highway Twenty construction when we became engaged with you, so that's something that we noted. Some people voiced a concern about limited involvement and volunteerism. Some employment opportunity challenges that might be inhibiting growth, as well as housing, minimal housing options, and then possibly some issues with academic achievement as well. We reviewed some current marketing that was provided to us. Again, top level, the city website, the Chamber Facebook page, Chamber radio ads, event flyers, and collateral that was provided to us. Audiences, we define the primary audience as being the residents of Sac City first and foremost. They need, you know, all of the people that live here need to be on board with what we're doing and understand the brand in order to effectively market it to outsiders, being the second audience. Maybe potential residents moving here, visitors, businesses that might look to locate here. And the real goal of what we're doing is to increase the quality of life for residents of Sac City and introduce resources which may be able to speak to those who are interested in visiting or relocating to the community. So as I mentioned, we did a lot of research, and we're just gonna briefly cover our methods. And then we're actually just gonna jump right into the research and share some of the findings with you all. We've conducted some leadership interviews. I believe we completed nine of these. We identified who the leaders, some leaders that we wanted to speak to, working with Adam, Barb, and Randy. And it was a thirty to sixty-minute conversation with each leader that it really allowed us to get an in-depth look into the challenges they might see, the opportunities, strengths of the community. It was, it was nice to have that dialogue, extended dialogue with leaders. We also did a brand audit, so as I mentioned, the city and the chambers submitted a bunch of materials to us. We provided a checklist suggesting some things we'd like to review, and a lot of things were sent to us for us to mull over. And then an online survey, this was probably the biggest piece of our research and probably the biggest part of our assessment that we'll share with you tonight. We distributed, and hopefully, most of you completed it, but we distributed an online survey to both residents and visitors. And I believe three hundred, I think we had three hundred and fifty responses, or somewhere in that range. So not bad. And it was, it gave us a lot of insight into people's thoughts and opinions of the community. We also, as a team, donated our time just to come here and get familiar with the community. We didn't feel like we could do a proper assessment without actually spending some time here. We didn't, we didn't tell anyone we were coming. We just came up for a day. Some team members spent the night. And it was invaluable, I mean, in terms of what we were able to learn and just being able to experience it as a visitor. Most of our team had never been here before, I would say, almost, at least half, were first-time visitors to the community. And then we did a brief, sometimes we do competitive analysis, analyses for these types of strategies. Being that you didn't all, you all didn't identify any direct competitors, although we know there's some that exist, we really wanted to look at communities that might have assets similar to y'all, like a historical asset like the Chautauqua Building, or natural resources like the river, or even maybe a community that experienced similar challenges, like with a bypass being introduced. So we just took a look at several other small towns and made some observations about best practices. So I'm gonna turn it over to Blake, and he's gonna take you all through some detailed research.
Again, I'm Blake Argit Singer, the Lead Strategist and Brand Catalyst. And I was part of the interview committee to interview some of the leaders in the town. And through this section, I'm not gonna go terribly in-depth, we'll touch on some of the points later on, but some of the high-level things that we pulled out of these assessments. Overall, people were proud to be from Sac City, to live and do business there. These are the leaders. People were proud too, but, but they were. And they said the people were what makes Sac City great. Some of the qualities that make Sac City unique was the water quality, the hospital, museum, people and volunteerism, the Chautauqua Building, and city parks. And as you can see on the quote, "A lot of nice, good, hard-working people make up Sac City." From this, we did a bit of an assessment as well to find some of the strengths and the challenges that we pulled out of what the leaders were saying about the community. The strengths, the people. Again, it's the people that makes the community who it is, and it's a community that's made up of people who care. Small-town benefits, the slower pace of life, the safeness of the community, these were seen as strengths for the community. And then the assets, the hospitals, the parks and recreation, the golf course, aquatic center, churches. It has more than what most small towns have, and this was seen as a benefit. Some of the challenges, as Emily kind of talked about before, of what we first noticed and what the leadership was sounding back to us was employment was, is still a challenge. Entertainment options are lower than what are in bigger cities. Education, housing options, infrastructure are all challenges, and are all challenges that a lot of smaller towns or cities face. Then as you can see here in the Sac City is, these were some statements, maybe you can't see them, I'll read a few of them. These are just some of the, you know, off-the-cuff responses we asked the leaders to say, "If a visitor came to town, how would you describe Sac City?" And so this is what they said. "Sac City is a nucleus of forward thinkers. Chamber plans a lot of things for the community. Everything you need to live in a small town except clothing. At best, a city holding its own and perhaps in a slow decline. A smaller agriculturally-based town with some light industry. A small town living with big-town ambition." And I won't read all of them, but a diverse group of descriptions of what it is. The brand audit, as Emily described, was provided by the city and the chamber and provided us an inside look of what marketing materials were happening or being used, and really what was, what were some of the strengths and the weaknesses again. And so some of our high-level observations is a clear visual identity wasn't present. Meaning, and you see this a lot between city and chamber, they don't always have the same look and feel, and they don't always have to have that same look and feel. Materials sometimes felt outdated, and some of them were outdated and needed to be updated. There are deep roots in history. There's a lack of cohesion among some city resources. The majority of resources came from the chamber, and the lack of communication channels to all residents was evident. And we'll talk more about these things later on in the report, so I won't go in-depth right now. Some of the audit highlights, I don't know if you saw the book that we were passing around, but we actually did value this book that gave a nice history of Sac City. It gave us a good representation or a good understanding of where Sac City started out and how it passed through the years. And it was very interesting. The Chautauqua movement came out of that, and how in nineteen oh eight they had their first building of the Chautauqua, and is a very unique asset in the state of Iowa. It's the only one standing and could actually be used.
There are two others.
There's two others, but from what I understand is that they are either in repair now or not in the same condition as the one here.
They're just basically roofs and poles.
The resident industry packet was another piece that we used that would more or less welcome new people to the community. And we thought this was a great, potentially great piece. This was one of the pieces that needed some updating. The event schedule was also very helpful to us to know what organizations were participating in events around town and gave us a good understanding of what organizations exist and what people were doing, what volunteers were doing. The community survey, as Emily mentioned, this is, this was the most robust piece that we took out of the assessment. And really, it served a dual purpose, and we had this in mind, is that not only does it provide us insight and data and feedback from the community, but it also lets the community give their voice and show that they are participating in this, and gives them the opportunity to express the direction and the vision of the town. So in these next few pages, I'm gonna be highlighting some of the feedback and show some of the quotes and highlight some of the data as well. Fifty-seven zip codes were represented in this survey. And this is a geographic location of all the people who responded. So not only were they in Sac City, but these were visitors that really spanned the length of the country. And then you can see in the blown-out image, that was a shot of all of the responses in Iowa. And you can also see the responses by age group, which we thought was a pretty good range. And so these are some visual representations of the questions that we asked. So on the survey, we asked, "What do you like most about living in Sac City?" And followed up by asking, "What do you like least about living in Sac City?" In the blue, in the positive range, "Character of smaller community" was the highest-ranking response of what people like about Sac City. Followed by "Cost of living," "Convenience of location," "Dining options," and "Disposition of residents." The negative attributes, the things people liked least about living in Sac City, was "Career opportunities" was the number-one least thing they liked about Sac City, followed by "Shopping options," "Disposition of residents," "Entertainment nightlife," and "The appearance of the city." Which you probably noticed from the call-out here, that "Disposition of residents" is listed on the list twice. Which we found that an interesting theme. And this is a quote from an open-ended response. "The community is full of loyal citizens. However, there is much discord among the cliques. Cooperation is lacking." And so you'll kind of see throughout this report and the assessment that there are groups that think cooperation is really strong, and there are other groups who think it's not so strong. Another question we asked was, "Which words do you believe best describe Sac City?" And the visual representation, the larger the word, the more votes it had for it, and the smaller were the least voted for. And as you can see here, we pulled out the statistic that declining and friendly were only separated by two votes. "If Sac City offered the following arts and entertainment options, how likely would you be to attend?" So we pulled out the stats of, and have them broken up as likely and extremely likely to attend, and highlighted some of the ones that people were most engaged with. The concert series in the Chautauqua Building, Summer Arts Festival in the park, Seasonal Farmers Market was the number-one thing, with nearly seventy percent of residents saying that they would attend this.
And a note is that on this survey, there was an option for people to say neutral, so kind of they're undecided whether they would attend. So it's not that they wouldn't, the people not represented here would not attend, they just aren't likely or extremely likely.
Right.
So that's worth noting that, right.
And again, nearly fifty percent on the remaining family movie nights in the park, music theater productions in the Chautauqua Building, summer carnival, and the comedian showcase. So clearly, people do want entertainment options. That was indicated earlier. "Which of the following things may cause you to increase the amount of business activities you do in Sac City?" Some of the things that we highlighted here were better shopping selection variety and more events entertainment options. Which we kind of interpreted that expanding the event options might produce shopping opportunities that could draw more business to town, and could be something that we explore later. Here, we were impressed with the statistic that seventy-three percent were likely or extremely likely to recommend Sac City as a place to raise a family. Which seventy-three percent is a good majority. Eighty-five percent of residents feel that the Chautauqua Day's Fourth of July celebration is the most valuable to the community. And Emily, remind me what other, the list that we saw previously of all the things that they would attend as being valuable assets, amongst other things listed there.
We basically put the schedule of chamber events. So you might have Portober Fest, or you might have the quilt of the holding fair of the Chautauqua. It should be noted, almost all of the events that people noted were the strongest for the community were located in the Chautauqua or surrounded. Like, the Avenue of Lights also rated out high. But overwhelmingly, the Fourth of July celebration, the fireworks and the parade specifically received the most praise.
Right. And of the visitor survey, fifty-one percent indicated that they are most likely to attend a Chautauqua celebration again. "What is the likelihood you would recommend the following activity or attraction to a friend or family member?" Again, this is a visual representation with the larger circles being the most recommended item. And the circle, the smaller the circle is, the least recommended. So by far, it was dining. Dining was the highest recommended. I think Cattlemen's came up a few times. And Tea with Lilians. We recommended that place. We were able to visit. Off the record. Some of the other, around the outside of the Chautauqua Building was recommended, the rec center, parks, the aquatic center, and shopping. So not that shopping is a total drawback, there are things that people like to shop for here. Here, we pulled out some of the open-ended responses and categorized them into different themes that we were noticing. And we have four pages of quotes here, and even more quotes in the addendum. So I'm not gonna read all the way through them, but I am gonna read the groups that we put them into. And we'd invite you to read through them because we found a lot of value reading through these open-ended responses. The first group was, "Respondents recognize Sac City's unique, beautiful landscape." Many respondents felt strongly that the community's overall appearance is lacking. Some respondents feel that the community should be more welcoming, and in some cases, the community's appearance contributes to this feeling. Again, a lot of interesting insight coming from these quotes. And as much as I'd like to read through all of them, I know it would take a little bit of time. Most respondents agree that Sac City is family-friendly. Many respondents commented on the fact that the community is lacking entertainment options, and more specifically, family-oriented events. There is a shared sentiment that Sac City's infrastructure is an issue. Many respondents appreciate the community's recreation offerings and proximity to nature, suggesting they would like to see this future, this further emphasized or expanded upon. Offering additional educational and training opportunities, along with a focus on attracting developing entrepreneurs, were ideas offered by respondents for strengthening the community. Again, I would invite you to read through these, because there's a lot of great stuff in there. While interviews with community leaders portrayed a city that is progressive, many survey respondents felt that the opposite is true. Similarly, respondents described division and discord they felt in the community. Respondents showed optimism in the future if the community can restore a sense of pride and cooperation among citizens. As Emily mentioned, we, a group of us, well, really, the whole office, and a few, volunteered our time to come up here and really immerse ourselves and experience the town as a visitor would. Since most of us had not been to Sac City before, we were seeing it with a fresh, new look, with new eyes, as a visitor would see it. So through this, we made a point to talk with the community, to go into shops and talk and just get a feel for what it was like to visit Sac City. And also did some walking tours of the neighborhoods, in the downtown, and through the parks, and really got a, tried to understand what all the city had to offer. Which of course is difficult in the day and, you know, in the morning, but we did our best, and we did walk a lot and snapped a lot of photos. So we will show you some of the photos that we snapped during that trip. To kind of recap some of the themes that were most noted, we all filled out a little journal and kept track of what we were noticing during the day. These were the reoccurring themes among all of our notes. The nature in the parks was a big mention between all of our staff. The proximity to the town, to the Raccoon River, and the ability to walk from downtown right down to the river. And also through the neighborhoods, the established trees was something that people really felt connected to, that they felt they were always drawn towards the woods or down to the park. Recreation was another big mention, that, you know, Haggie Park and the park around the Chautauqua with fishing and kayaking and camping were all options that they would love to be able to take advantage of. The downtown and the unique dip going down to the downtown was something that they immediately noticed. And we had one feedback that his, a staff member's father had made the comment that, "You've never seen a more beautiful sunrise than looking up over that hill in Sac City." Which we thought was a pretty cool statement. Walkability. The team spent a lot of time walking and made a lot of observations that it was easy to walk in certain areas of town and to get down to the parks. And in other areas, it was maybe not so easy. Residential areas. There are some grand houses in Sac City, and those were certainly noted. And maintenance and care on those houses and on other properties were also noted. Signage was a big thing, since we were unfamiliar with the town, we relied a lot on the signs and made a lot of notes and took a lot of pictures of the signage around town. The buildings, of course, we're walking around downtown and made notes and observations on the conditions and the states of some of the properties. So I'm just gonna slide through a few of the pictures that we took of the nature and the parks and some of our themes. I think at this day, we were all wishing we had a kayak or a canoe. I know some people were wishing they had a frisbee disc, which it took us a little time to figure out that these hoops, these basketball hoops, were meant for disc golf, but the rest of them knew right away what it could be used for. And as you can see, some of the walkability options, some really nice, clean sidewalks, you know, shaded trees, and in other areas where it's difficult to walk down the sidewalks. And really, I mean, as you can see, as we're flipping through here, it's really kind of a dichotomy. There's such great parts of town, and then, you know, there's the opposite. And of course, the middle ground is hard to showcase, and there's a lot of middle ground as well. But we're just, we're trying to show everything that we observed. For the comparative analysis, as Emily was mentioning, we tried to find similar communities that were facing the same challenges. And we found a nationwide study that was conducted by the University of North Carolina School of Government. And they surveyed fifty to a hundred cities across the nation that had unique features, like as she was mentioning, a small town near a river, or a small town that was recently bypassed by a highway. Which is kind of crazy to think that there are so many similarities to towns in this country that are facing the same problems. So we found that case study very relevant, and in there, there were seven themes that were presented. And we wanted to present them to you, as we found them helpful in thinking about some of our recommendations. So the lessons learned from this study, in small towns, community development is economic-developable. developable. Small towns with the most dramatic outcomes tend to be proactive and future-oriented, they embrace change and assume risk. Successful community economic development strategies are guided by a broadly-held local vision. Defining assets and opportunities broadly can yield innovative strategies that capitalize on a community's competitive advantage. Innovative local governance partnerships and organizations significantly enhance the capacity for community economic development. Some of these are mouthful, I know, but reading into the case studies, we did find, I would be happy to refer you to the case studies we found too. Effective communities identify, measure, and celebrate short-term success to sustain support for long-term community economic development. And we thought, I thought that was great, you know, you have to celebrate your successes, you have to know what you're doing, and you have to recognize that change takes time, progress can be slow at times, so knowing when to celebrate and celebrating those, you know, those steps are important. Viable community economic development involves the use of a comprehensive package of strategies and tools rather than a piecemeal approach. One case study that we wanted to highlight, that was done in Iowa, actually, it highlighted the town of Fairfield, Iowa. Not to go too in depth, but Fairfield faced a challenge when their Parsons College closed in, I think, the early seventies. And that, as you can imagine, a university is a very big part of the town, and so it was a big hit economically for them. And they were able to find a new school to come in and take the place, they bought it from Santa Barbara, California, and moved their entire campus to Fairfield, Iowa, which is in southeast Iowa. And from that, the university that they attracted, it was from a different school of thought, the Maharishi School of Management, and what happened from that, and it's taken some time, but it's formed this entrepreneurial spirit. They have been called the Silicon Valley of the Midwest, or of the United States, I guess. So it's really interesting of how some of these lessons that, you know, were acknowledged in this case study were shown through in Fairfield. So from all of these assessments, and all these tools that we used, we developed some strengths and weaknesses, some overall themes that we've discovered. The Chautauqua building was one strength that we identified, it's a very unique asset, it offers a lot of opportunity for events to be held there, and a lot of the community values this, they find that it's the most recommended event that they would go to, the things that they like going to usually happen in or around the Chautauqua building. Not to mention the rich history that the Chautauqua holds with Sac City. The natural setting, throughout all of the assessment, and all of the interviews, surveys, questions, these things were brought up, the river, the trees, the closeness between downtown and those parks, and all of the parks that they have, that was a reoccurring theme that kept coming up. The Main Street Iowa designation, being a Main Street community offers a lot of opportunities for resources and to preserve the community, to improve the facades and get the help that a group has done for other small communities in Iowa. And we see that as a strength to be able to leverage and to utilize. Passionate citizens, people want to volunteer, they want to do things, they want to see the town move forward, they want to get a commonly-held vision that's going to take them to the next stage in this history. There's a diversity of organizations, there are so many organizations that, we don't have a complete list, I mean, we looked through the events, through what we've seen online, but there's a lot of people willing to dedicate their time to make this a great place to live. And it's family-friendly, I mean, you've seen in the stats, you've seen through the open-ended surveys, people think this is a great place to raise a family. Some of the challenges or the weaknesses we found was the community appearance, there are parts of town that draws people to immediately, that you don't want them to be drawn to immediately, you know, there's so many great things, but some of the less beautiful places of town seem to get the attention, and people feel this, and they want to make a change for that. The economic climate is another area that people have made comments on that would like to see improvement on. Minimal entertainment options was another area that people thought could be improved, whether it's family-friendly or otherwise. Housing options was also a topic that came up, that there are just not a lot of housing options for new families or residents to come into, and the ones that are available may be too much work to be able to feasibly take it on in their life stage. Academic achievement was something else that kept coming up, and not only the achievement, but the consolidation, and just the overall ideas of what people want to have out of their school systems. And then some discord in the community, as you saw the split between that survey question, some people feel that it's a very cohesive community, and some people feel divided. So we feel that's an area that should be addressed, and our recommendations will work to combat that. So where do we go from here? Yeah. I don't know if there's a color adjustment on here, but I'll just read through them. We want to, I wonder if we can just skip through this, I'll let you talk to orbit today. But I will read through them really quick. We want to build a brand foundation. We want to celebrate a history that embodies the identity of Sac City. We want to provide recommendations that improve community appearance, that embrace natural resources and recreation, that enhances a balance of events, that reawakens community pride, that encourages entrepreneurship, and to prepare to welcome residents and visitors to the community. So with that, we will go more in-depth on those again, and I'll pass it along to Emily.
Do you want to look at the color adjustment, please? Because we can just keep...
Yeah, you can turn the light off, we might be a little...
Yeah.
We have a hard time to just see in general.
We can't see the light, the light written stuff at all.
If you can make up the letters, Bobby, you're better than some of us that are closer.
No, it didn't help.
No.
Still a little light, but we'll revisit this slide as Blake mentioned, coming up. And the conclusions, you're going to get a sense for the conclusions as we move through this, so we won't keep reading text to you that can be read in electronic version. So really, at this point of our strategies, we want to take all of what we've learned, and before we make marketing recommendations, we do want to define the brand of Sac City. Who is Sac City, what does it stand for? And we use the term brand essence. Now, what is a brand essence? A brand essence is basically expressed in the simplest, most single-minded terms. It's not a tagline, you may see taglines for communities, it's not that, it's just, it's like I mentioned before, we're trying to get to what Sac City, who Sac City is at its core, and that's what this essence is intended to do. For example, some sample brand essence statements that you might, that might ring a bell, commonly referred to, one commonly referred to is Volvo's, their brand essence is safety. They don't advertise, they don't use that as a phrase or a tagline, but that's the essence of everything they do, or what they want to communicate is safety. Hallmarks is caring shared. Again, it's not a public message that they put out there, but it's an understanding within the organization that that's the message they're trying to convey. Some others, Disney is fun, family entertainment. Nike is authentic athletic performance. And as we all know, Nike uses Just Do It and a bunch of other taglines, but at the core of who they are, everything that they measure against is that essence, authentic athletic performance. So what is Sac City's brand essence? Spirited roots are the words that we came up with, and bear with us here as we explain this a little bit, but think about those words, spirited roots, in terms of what Sac City represents. Now, roots had a special meaning to us after visiting, after looking at the research, the history that this community embodies. You heard Blake talk about the grand homes, the architecture, the Chautauqua movement, the structures, the established trees, it's clear just by entering Sac City that there is a rich history that's very much appreciated by many. Back to the building, the Chautauqua building. It's part of the roots of this community, and it's a very important part of the roots. And we're going to talk about this in a moment, but there's also a certain spirit that's associated with the movement that came with that Chautauqua building in the early nineteen hundreds. A place for family, you heard Blake say that time and time again, and to us, again, this is, it comes back to roots, it's a place to lay down your roots as a family. And we really believe that that's a very important distinctive thing that we want to call out as a piece of brand, Sac City's brand essence. A spirited energy, you know, Blake talked about, yes, there were a lot of negative, there were a lot of positive, but overall, you could sense the passion that people feel for this community, I mean, you're always going to have that, right? I mean, you're not, especially in surveys, I mean, people are gonna, they're gonna say what they love and what they hate, that's just, that's how surveys work. But it was evident there was passion, and that people wanted to get involved. And we talk about the river, we observed it and we heard it in comments, there's an energy, like just a spirit that the river brings as it flows through the entire community. It's community spirit, I mentioned that, it's really just waiting to be reignited, as we say here. And then, the idea of the native heritage, you know, we, some of the communities we've worked with in the past, we focused a lot on the name, and what, how the name ties in, and while we didn't do that a lot in this case, you know, there's obviously a Native American history, that the word spirit has an interesting connotation there in terms of Sac City. So what we want to do now is, again, this is just at the core of what we really believe we want to be talking about as a branded message, and as a brand in general for Sac City, but where do we go from here to build a brand? And I'm going to talk about a couple of things, first, I want to talk about promoting the community. This was a quote that, this was an information packet that we received, the one we talked about being a bit outdated, but lots of good information. And on a couple of the information sheets in this packet, there was a statement, quality, that Sac City, quality living results when physical, cultural, educational, spiritual, emotional needs are not just met, but filled beyond what is ordinary. Life in Sac City offers extraordinary. We found a direct connection, and this was likely intentional, but when we were looking at the Chautauqua movement and all that it meant, a direct connection to those four pillars of the Chautauqua movement are education, recreation, and religion. Clearly, Sac City is connected with those, we're not even forcing that, or suggesting that you try to become that, clearly that's something that you're already driving towards. Research demonstrated that a lot of community members hold these values important as well. And we're recommending, in terms of promoting the community, that we're, that you further apply the Chautauqua spirit as a lens through which you look at everything that you do, whether it's developing events, whether it's creating new initiatives, new organizations, I mean, the pillars can really drive a lot of the decisions that are made in a cohesive, consistent way. You know, we found a lot of information about the steps the community is already taking to restore some structures, the recent recognition on the National Register of Historic Places, we find that that is, it's unique, it's something that really distinguishes, I mean, again, we know there's three Chautaques, but if you go online, I mean, you're not going to find them by a simple search, you know, it's Sac City every time. Even certain search terms, Sac City would come up time and time again nationally when we search for things about Chautauqua. Even in the history books and things that we read, posters from Iowa and references to this structure came up. So we just find that, I mean, you just can't ignore that, it's so distinguishable, so unique, and so powerful, it's, a lot of communities want to create these things in their community, you have history that directly ties you to this exact movement, it's not a stretch at all, it is essentially who you were and who you are, it's just not at the surface necessarily. Another thing that we find interesting, you can't deny, we haven't really talked about it, but the connection of the community to patriotism and a love of country, clearly the Freedom Rock, clearly memorials, I mean, clearly there's a strong sense of patriotism here, and there is this classic Americana feel we kept coming back to that's associated with the Chautauqua movement. And as we've talked about, it just so happens that Chautauqua Days, your signature community event, at least that's what's seen by residents and visitors, happens to fall on Independence Day. So we think that's significant, and it's just natural that, again, that you, that the town would embrace this Chautauqua movement that ties so close to the history of our country. We, this quote was something that really drove us home for us, President Roosevelt, the Chautauqua is the most American thing in America. And I won't go through this entire quote, but we think it's really important to note that we're not introducing an idea to embrace that's dated or dead. The Chautauqua movement, and many of you are probably familiar with this, those that have worked on some of the historical recognition, it's definitely experiencing a renaissance right now. Existing Chautauqua communities are thriving, and ones from the past are being resurrected. You find a community, I think it was in Indiana, I believe, that's small, and embarking on a really extensive effort to raise funds to restore their Chautauqua, and events are being designed around it, and it's having a large impact. We found on the Chautauqua Trail website that more than a million people visited Chautauqua communities in the country, as well as Canada, just last year, taking advantage of the programming that was associated with that. So promoting the community, again, thinking about the Chautauqua movement and how that can benefit the brand and help build the brand, but as you noted through the research, we also think it's, find it's really important to connect the community. There does seem to be some division, and this movement is essentially about connecting. I mean, yeah, it's about connecting with the past, with family, with spirituality, but it's also connecting as a community. And, you know, we reference it in this copy, but you all know that you're, you know, the best salesperson for Sac City are the people that live here, and if people aren't feeling that pride, or if they have some sort of grievance, it's doing a disservice to promotion before we even get to market, you know, to say what we want to say on a website or whatever. So creating that synergy and that pride, cooperation, all of those things, why couldn't we use the spirit of the Chautauqua movement to start driving that home? And just have people unite around that idea moving forward. I'll jump to the quote here, "Communities did find that Chautauqua knit them together in ways that nothing else could or did. Chautauqua is an opportunity for all the people of the town to work together to foster a sense of community that reaches out to everyone." This is from an author of a book, The Most American Thing in America. We found that was just really powerful in terms of, at least what it did, and again, why couldn't it, why couldn't it do that again if we're really embracing the spirit of the movement? Similarly, we talked a lot about, you know, while we want to make sure residents are happy, and that we're giving them a great, a great way of life here, quality of life, you know, time and time again when we talk to leaders, it's important to draw visitors, it's important to draw new residents and businesses. And we really are emphasizing that, you know, we're not, again, we're trying to find, find out who Sac City is, how you can sell yourself without being something you're not, and you'll never be the big city, and you don't want to be. There's those small-town benefits that people find valuable, evidenced by the survey, and the small town gives people the ability to connect with each other and to connect with nature and things that the big towns just don't. We, again, thinking back to Americana and some of the yesteryear images that come to mind, you know, you think about families picnicking and certain nostalgic activities that, we use a lot of technology, but there's this movement now, it's like disconnect to reconnect, you know, people are in their mobile phones, and it's, there's a movement to reconnect with families and nature, and do some things to kind of have a break from technology. And while we know we need to embrace technology moving into, I mean, we're in the digital age, moving into the future, can Sac City offer people a more authentic connection than other communities can? It's something that we feel strongly about, this concept of the Chautauqua movement and the spirit, and really... And really, a community that supports all persons in the development of their full potential, intellectually, spiritually, emotionally, and physically, is a community that will be naturally attractive to residents and businesses. A summary statement of the idea. How do we, if, if this is the brand essence of Sac City, the spirited roots, the, the family, the, the movement of everything that the Chautauqua era embodied, how do we use that essence and those ideas to guide strategy? And we come back to these core, what we're calling strategic guideposts. Things that we can use to build ideas around that support what we're, what we're saying Sac City embodies and what the brand is. I'm going to move you through four of them and then Blake's going to return to take you through four. And I guess we're not doing too bad on time, but I, I also don't want to take you through every detail, but we do want to lay some ideas out in front of you so you can envision how this connection and how some things might take place in the future to help build a brand. So first, the brand foundation. These are pretty standard pieces, not all of them, but most of them, that we would recommend to a community like yourselves. There's certain pieces that need to be in place before we start engaging in other activities to ensure people that come into contact with you are seeing a consistent message, a professional message. These can almost be considered building blocks for future promotional efforts. These top two, the logo identity and the positioning statement, are something that we've already agreed to do for you. And those will be the next steps, really, to, to give you, again, a logo isn't your brand, a positioning isn't a brand, it's a combination of, of many things, but it is the most immediate visual representation of, of who you are to someone that's unfamiliar with you. And a logo can, again, bring cohesion. And it's not even necessarily just a logo for the community. Many times, communities such as yourselves have identity families, identity systems, I should say. And, you know, that this identity could be extended to the Chamber or a version of it. Maybe it's something, a version of it's used on police cars and on graphics. It's something that, that again, unifies the community and helps people get a sense for who Sac City is just at a glance. A positioning statement or a tagline could also support that. Again, spirited roots isn't the tagline, but maybe it's something that conveys that idea of, of family and a certain spirit that's present here. Stationery collateral is something else, just a basic item, but a business card, stationery, envelopes, electronic letterheads, something that when you're communicating with people, they see that cohesion with the brand. A brand standards guide, this is the third thing that we also have agreed to do, initial package. And this is a, a critical piece. I don't want to go into too much depth. I think we spoke about it a bit last time we were here. But this is really what will make sure your investment in a brand, it does not go to waste. It is a guide for anybody that's marketing the community or making decisions. It's about how the logo is used, certain font styles. It's really to build consistency because without consistency, with everything that looks different than the next, it, you're losing impact. It's not as powerful of a message. So the brand standards guide really helps guide that. And we talked briefly about a brand champion down here. It doesn't need to be a, a new full-time position by any means, but typically having an individual appointed to sort of be the administrator of the brand standards is, is a critical piece at some level, kind of the brand police, if you will. So a couple of other foundational elements that we see as things that need to be considered sooner than others perhaps are a guide to Sac City. This is something, this came, you'll see in the survey open-ended comments, some people talked about, I think it was mentioned, especially elderly folks had, had trouble knowing what everything that was going on. And they were looking for a comprehensive guide. Obviously, this wouldn't be just for visitors. I mean, as mentioned, it could be given to residents too, but it's really, if we're focusing in on, on something that Sac City is offering, whether it's even a connection to nature and we're trying to communicate a certain feeling and build the brand, it's just as important for people that live here to get a sense for who they are, who Sac City is, and who they're trying to be as it is, visitors knowing what's available. Community website, websites. We know that the Chamber is redesigning their website, but, but quite honestly, this was probably the, one of the weaker points of the brand audit that we found. It's just, I mean, again, Google is sort of king right now, or, or online in general is where people go for their information. And, you know, while the city website definitely has some, you know, we mentioned some things up here in terms of considerations to make when, when developing a new website. Being mobile-friendly, you know, that doesn't exist right now. Social networks, well, social media doesn't exist either. The Chamber has social media, but there's, there's no links to it necessarily. Not a lot of great images. You know, just knowing what we know now about Sac City and, and everything that we have to offer, there isn't an online presence that can, can communicate that right now. And the social media channels. We're just offering some, some best practices on social media, but again, it's, it's really important to be in that space because that's where people are engaging. And anymore too, social media isn't just a place to advertise. In fact, it's becoming less of that because of certain algorithms and things that social media channels are doing. But we find in our industry that it's becoming a way to engage with residents and visitors about what community offers. It's a forum where people can ask questions and engage with one another, even outside of the city or Chamber, whomever getting involved. People can have conversations, you know, how, what's the fishing like in the Raccoon River? What's, you know, what's the river level? Without you having to answer it, people can have that dialogue between themselves. And it's also, we just brought up a little note here, I grew up in Sac City posting conversations. It's, you know, we talk about pride and getting back some of that. There's a lot of groups or efforts that people are taking on to, to recall memories of living in their community or history of the community. Blake can talk to me about any example.
Now, there's a, a group that I grew up in. I grew up in Cedar Falls and they have a Facebook page called "I Grew Up in Cedar Falls." And the Historical Society and some key members really took it on and are avid posters on it. And they post old-school photos from elementary schools or old, old photos of the downtown area of what it used to be like in 1908 when the trolley car ran through there. Or they'll randomly take photos of, or have people submit photos of neighborhoods, of houses. And people will chime in and say, hey, I lived there. Hey, I lived there in 1976 and this is what I did at the house. Or there was a fire there in 1992 during homecoming, I remember that. And it's incredible the way people from all over the country engage with this big Facebook page, because you don't have to be in one location. It's, it's a nationwide thing and, and it really does an excellent job of connecting people back to their community.
And just imagine if, if the Historical Society or the museum got involved and started talking about the Chautauqua movement or, granted, not many people might have direct memories of it, but, but photos and, and trying to instill that idea, it could really, it could really inspire some, some community pride. The history, we've talked about this a lot, the Chautauqua building, the park, defining and distinguishing what makes Sac City unique and inviting using these very powerful assets. Similarly to the identity system for the community, we see it there being a big benefit just in researching other Chautaques around the country, having an identity for the Chautauqua building also. And I should caveat too, we know some of these things may have been things that have been discussed about, or maybe they're even in, in progress and we're not aware of that. And if so, great. We're just wanting to give a really comprehensive look here at what we see as, as key moving forward. We should also note that some of these can overlap sections. There is no magic to these eight pillars. A lot of these, as this were first one, I mean, it could be considered a brand foundational element, but we've just sort of categorized them that way for purposes of, as I remember you. A historical walking tour. We thought this, again, trying to get back to the community's history and, and connect people to what this movement was and, and what all these structures and the park are, and maybe around the community as well, even the gazebo, the, the fact that that was donated by the founder and, and talking about the founder, having, having a historical tour around town and using signage to support that, we thought would be a really powerful thing for the community. The Chautauqua Trail Network is, we don't know the logistics of joining it, but we found it really interesting that there's this website. I think the one that comes furthest over, furthest west is the Indiana, or I think it's the Indiana Chautauqua, but it's, some of you are probably familiar with it, but we found it pretty powerful in the way it was able to promote these Chautauqua buildings and, and what they were doing. And we think that people really seek out these Chautaques that are, that are interested in that movement using this website. It probably helps with programming as well, to connect with other Chautaques. Chautauqua Days or summer programming, we, we just see more happening there. We know that a lot is already on the agenda for Chautauqua Days, but maybe thinking in terms of, people suggested some more family-friendly activities. One person was talking about getting back to duck races and, and certain really simple pleasures that, again, were evident during that time. Something to consider as you might look to expand Chautauqua Days and really make it your signature event. We know that sometimes communities, and we'll talk about events a little bit more in a minute, but, you know, communities can be exhausted and they feel like they don't have enough volunteers and we're just expanding the event schedule, but people really did indicate an interest in volunteering if they were, if they were able to connect with things that interested them or that were more family-friendly or that were bringing in out-of-towners. People were really interested in, in trying to help bring in people versus just have events for the local residents. Improving the appearance, I mean, we don't need to say much more than that. We, we're, we know that efforts are being undertaken. We saw them. In fact, we had been to the Freedom Rock Welcome Center, or whatever the term of that is, when we were here and noted that the structure needed a little help and took a couple photos. And then, you know, lo and behold, we returned last week and there's been a lot of improvement and it's looking really great. So, you know, we know things are in progress and, and we're just, again, making some suggestions here based on our experiences and the research that was, that was gathered. But forming a betterment committee. We'll talk about this in a moment too, when we talk about committees, but we know that there are organizations in town that are focused on progress. And we heard it mentioned in the survey about an effort called Paint Sac City. We're not exactly sure, we, we couldn't get our hand or heads around everything that is currently taking place, but we feel that, that having a, a focused betterment committee that can be dedicated to these projects, whether, whether it's an evolution of something that we have now, that you have now, or a combination of groups, obviously, we feel that that's an important piece of, of improving some of the properties or the general appearances of spaces. Branded banners are something that we just wanted to, to put in front of you also. It's a way to, it's a way to visually draw people to the new brand, to the idea, to promote who Sac City is in a very friendly, welcoming manner. And just really exciting residents and making them see something new, they're feeling progress. And it adds to the community's appearance to have a cohesive flow through, especially the, the beautiful Main Street, to, to display some banners that, to brag about the community's brand of it. We talked about setting up a neighborhood tour a lot. We talked about certain grant programs and things that might be able to be done locally just to inspire neighborhoods. Maybe there's some cohesion that that could inspire, but we talked specifically about the history, tying to the history and maybe seasonally or, we don't know what the timing would be, but designating a neighborhood that there's going to be a historical tour in and that we're going to talk about some old homes and, and talk about some history. Maybe it would inspire some of the property owners to, to do a bit of cleanup or inspire neighbors to, to try to lend a hand. Again, just a thought that, that might be a way to, to foster some pride in, in neighborhoods and, and offer a bit of connectedness as well. Developing a vision for community aesthetics. We're going to share, we weren't hired to do visioning and we know you've done some, but we couldn't resist, just being creative people that we are and designers, to, to put some stuff in front of you in terms of aesthetics. We'll show you a couple of photos here in a minute. But one thing we talked about too is transforming neglected real estate with art. We've seen a couple murals around town and we feel that there's an opportunity to do more of that. Again, the Chautauqua movement was, one of the main pillars was the arts and culture. And imagine murals around town that were interpretations of certain ideas of the Chautauqua movement or, or, I mean, you can see here, there's a lot of nature present in these murals. But we, we feel that, you know, whether it's alleyways or sides of buildings or whatever it might be, that's an opportunity. One thing I guess I didn't want, I don't think we have a visual for this, but one thing we thought would be really powerful, and I guess we talked about, I'm going to let you talk about that in the nature of the river. And we talk about carrying the brand through city ordinances. We're not familiar with your code and ordinances, but we always like to, when we're presenting ideas about a brand and embracing nature and arts and things that, making sure that the community's keeping that in mind when they're developing or adding to their ordinances. You know, we feel that open space downtown is really important, green space, because of the feeling Blake mentioned that how connected you immediately are to the, the established trees and, and the proximity of the Chautauqua Park to downtown. So maintaining those as the community evolves is important. Even little things like restricting, restricting backlit signs downtown perhaps could add to the historic feel or, again, we know you've probably talked about some of this with Main Street Iowa, but things that we just want to consider. We, we threw a tree-lined comedian in, through the downtown Main Street. We know that's not going to happen tomorrow or next month, but again, something that we just, we, being here and then learning from the response to the survey, people are drawn to, they call it this dip or the valley, and then the, the connection from the downtown immediately to the Raccoon River. And we felt if there was a way to create a more walkable, nature-driven path to can further connect the city, the, the Main Street to the, the Chautauqua Park, it could be a pretty cool thing. And then open spaces, this looks a bit like a cafe, but we just couldn't resist looking to at some of the opportunities that presented themselves for some of the open spaces or places that we know you're working on cleaning up, so to speak, that are going to create opportunities really for, for development. We also talked a little bit about having farmer's market pads or something. You saw that farmer's market was an event that people were really excited about. I guess this is my section. So finally, the, the natural resources. People said that these were important to them and they thought that we should embrace them and maybe want them a bit more to, or to visitors, but also kind of look for local tourism, for people to enjoy, for them to have a, a better way of life in Sac City. So this is where we, we just, again, throw out a project that isn't going to happen, we know, tomorrow, but the possibility of a river walk. We all were drawn immediately to the river and the idea of creating walkable neighborhoods and attractions is a, a key piece of creating an attractive community and, and something that draws visitors. So we thought looking at something like a river walk next to the river would be a really unique and exciting attraction to pull people into town. A trails committee. We know that there's a tree committee and we just, we think that's great and encourage that to continue really was the main point here, but implementing a committee to look at trails. We heard some mention of bike trails. There wasn't necessarily an agreement on, on what the bike trail should be, but even biking and walking lanes in town were some things that were mentioned. The water trail is obviously there. And we talked even about developing soft trails to keep expenses down so you're not putting in a lot of infrastructure, but you're advertising the community as an outdoor destination and, and developing all of these assets that you can promote.
The events and entertainment has also been something that we've been talking a lot about. And so to, to try and revive the, the community spirit of the, the Chautauqua spirit, you know, we see some opportunities to think of that in the way as we're thinking about different types of events that we can either promote as new or, or really coordinate efforts to do that. Kind of tying off of the trails committee, something that could be done is to host a trails festival. And there's a lot of opportunities to do that. I mean, and it ties in with the, the essence that we're talking about. It connects you to nature and, you know, connects the recreation and, and it's, it's a really great community building event. And some ideas that you could do is a, a, a night community bike ride. You know, you can light trails, you could, you know, have these luminaries that light the way, people could decorate their bikes with light-up high, or not highlighters, but glow-. people could decorate their bikes with light-up, not highlighters, but glow sticks. You know, it's, a lot of people get excited to do that. There could be a poker ride for the bicycles as well. Or a community float, a community dog walk. I mean, it doesn't have to be bicycles or strenuous activity. I mean, people can take their animals out and walk leisurely. Or night hikes at Hagy Park, for example, could be offered. You know, lighting the trails away and having story tellings or really, you know, embrace that spirit and the storytelling, the artistic way and really start intertwining all of those elements into these events. Movie nights was another suggestion that came through the survey and it could take place in several venues. It could be at the Chautauqua Building, of course. Or it could also be blocked off on Main Street and you're looking down the valley over the Raccoon River. And that could be a great event to encourage more business to take place in the shops around the town and really have a cool environment where this dip or the valley is such an unknown place as home to many residents of Sac City. To be able to sit out in the middle of the street could be a pretty unique event. Revive the shindig at the Chautauqua is another idea that we had. And we know that a lot of efforts has been done with that. And, you know, a note is, and through a lot of the things that we're offering and recommending and, you know, kind of ties into the promotion and having that communication channels that's going to reach the audience that you want. And so we see that as a great event and we'd really like to see it continue. A farmer's market or a seasonal stand, you know, it's shown through the survey and also is a great, unique thing for the community. A side note here, you know, we're saying make it memorable. So we were talking about, you know, all the corn stands, you know, the corn, the sweet corn that's for sale and the trailers are on the road. And, you know, we were thinking, you know, wouldn't it be great if one of those guys was actually roasting the corn, that you could buy it and, you know, get drawn in by the smell and go in and, you know, take your family there to have some corn on the cob right there. And one location that we thought would be really unique and came up in the surveys was at the depot. You know, that could be a space that was used for these pop-up stands or these seasonal stands or the roasters of sweet corn, you know, during harvest time or this time of year. So really, you know, having the balance of these events and thinking about the events that you can offer with those pillars and trying to tie those in. Reawaken the community pride and activism. We talked a lot about the passionate citizens, you know, these passionate people who want to have these events. They want to do these things. And one comment that stands out to me in the feedback is that, you know, I'm willing to volunteer, but I haven't because no one's asked. It makes sense, you know, you sometimes need to just ask for help for people to volunteer to know what's going on, because maybe they don't know. So some of the ideas to get out that message and one final one that we see is to establish a community newsletter. It'd be a branded, non-biased community newsletter that lets citizens know of what's happening in the community. And it would help leadership create a dialogue with the residents. So, and, I mean, it's not only to let them know about events, but, you know, it also helps to eliminate misunderstandings that might be happening with misinformation. Strengthening existing community organizations. We've listed this list on the side of the screen here and we know that there's more of them out there. You know, these are the ones that just surfaced that we thought could benefit from from having some additional structure to them or understanding how to manage some of the volunteers and allocate it to that too. Something that we brought up was having a mission or the priorities to tell their volunteers, to let them know if, you know, if this is something that you really think would be in line with your interests. Because that's crucial to be volunteering, it has to be something that's interesting to you and that you have some stake in. And so making sure that, you know, all of these organizations are clearly communicating with their volunteers of what they'll be doing. A best practices for volunteers is also a valuable thing that we would see being implemented. Some of the feedback that we got in the survey was, you know, they went to these volunteer events, but they weren't utilized, you know, their time was just kind of wasted or they didn't feel quite appreciated for volunteering their time and, you know, they're leaving their families or they're missing out on other opportunities to do this. And so maybe a volunteer best practices of how to manage your volunteers and really ensure that you're making the best use of them and so everyone's feeling like they're contributing to the organization. Another cool idea that we were kind of excited about was to host an organization fair. You know, they have these in high schools or colleges when you're first coming to a community or really, if you're even, I mean, you could be a junior or senior, you know, and still benefit from seeing what organizations exist. And this would be a great opportunity for the organizations to put up a little booth and to talk about what they do, what types of roles they need, what type of help they need, and have a sign-up form. So it's great for both sides, the organizations and the community, to find out how they could get involved and what they could find of interest to them. Some promotional items of Sac City could also be developed, you know, as we develop the logo and the tagline and positioning and really further the essence. You know, some items could be created. There's a really cool T-shirt line that Emily had discovered.
Yeah, the state of, it was the state of Colorado, but they had, they identified 10 assets around the state that people identified with. So it might be something musical, it might be something artsy, it might be something recreational like the river, it might be something historical like Mesa Verde. But they had developed 10 T-shirts that consistently had the state of Colorado brand, but each T-shirt had an image that somebody was proud to say that, hey, they went to residents and say, hey, this is in my state and I love doing it and that's why I love to live here. And we thought, why couldn't we do something like that for Sac City? You know, about knowing the raccoon or the shindig at the Chautauqua or coming up with some creative ways to advertise, use residents to advertise Sac City's assets through clothing.
Another idea is to really honor the rebrand with the celebration, to have a formal event, you know, as this new logo comes out and positioning statement and really make it known to the entire community who's vested here. I mean, they are the ones that are going to be living with us and needing to embody it. And so we see a celebration and, you know, significantly at the Chautauqua would be a great opportunity to get people excited about this. And as you see in the quote here, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." Which we thought was a pretty great and relevant quote. Entrepreneurship is another area that we think would be very valuable. And we've seen in other communities through case studies that it does work and takes work, but it's difficult to attract the industry or the manufacturers that a lot of small towns are after. And so starting early and encouraging entrepreneurship and the next generation showing them that it's possible to open up your own store, you know, it's possible to have your own business in the place you want to be. And as, you know, Sac City becomes more of that place for young people where they want to stay or come back to, or it is that way for many people, you know, having these opportunities for people to join an entrepreneurial network would be a great thing to initiate. So some of the ideas that we have would be an economic development brochure, you know, stating and giving resources of what's available for financing and support for these entrepreneurs. Offering cutting-edge technology, you know, fiber, the internet speeds, it's huge. So continuing to provide fiber, to, you know, get business here that provides fiber and really to showcase that you embody that as well. So maybe there are some public areas that have a Wi-Fi connection that people can come and resource. Or perhaps there's a room in the rec center that these, it'd be like a think tank. So, you know, people wanting to start their own business or needing a place to set up a small temporary office, they could come in here and bounce ideas off of one another or utilize these resources to help get their business off the ground. Engaging the local school system would be a great place to start. You know, coming into the elementary, the junior highs and the high schools and offering, you know, insight to what it is to run a few businesses that have started. Because there's a lot of entrepreneurs right here in Sac City that could very well be the ones presenting this or, you know, taking on mentorship students and, or mentoring students in high school, you know, coming in and seeing what it's like to run an actual business and get some, a real-life look at what it takes. And another thing, just to note, was to think sustainably. An idea that we had of just combating the housing issue, you know, thinking about the types of residents that you want to attract here too, you know, or the new businesses. You know, what if we could attract a housing development that's promoting net-zero housing? You know, houses that put energy back on the grid rather than using energy, that would have shared green space or whatever it might be. You know, some kind of innovative, progressive, you know, ideas which can sometimes turn people away, but when it comes down to not paying anything for your energy bills, you know, I don't know anyone that's going to turn that down. So just thinking in these ways that you can have these entrepreneurs and you want to attract these types of people. Preparing to welcome new residents and visitors. You know, this has to do with the housing, it has to do with the appearances and some of the ideas that we've put together are promote lodging business opportunities. We're surprised and, you know, kind of shocked to see that there was only 13 rooms available in Sac City. And to host larger events, it's going to become a challenge to have people stay here with just 13 rooms. And there's really no bed and breakfasts that we could find or know about. Which I know several people who have run Bed and Breakfast or currently running them and it's a great business. So you could encourage those types of business opportunities for, you know, both large bed and breakfasts to larger scale. A welcome kit would also be a great way to welcome people to the community, show what there is to offer, the resources. Signage, that's another thing, you know, the signs, thinking about how people come into the city or how they see your town off of the highway. What is it that's going to draw people to your town versus, you know, the next 15, 20 miles down the road? And so it could be, you know, some unique ad concepts. You know, the bermishade campaign has been a very popular one that's, you know, kind of unique and allows you to get a bit creative in your messaging to draw people in. But, you know, it wouldn't have to be that, you know, maybe it's, you know, going on with President Roosevelt's quote about the most American thing in America, the Chautauqua. You know, maybe it's talking about that, maybe it's the outdoor recreation. You know, there's a lot of areas to explore, but thinking in those terms of how you're going to pull people off the road is a crucial point. So where do we go from here? As we stated, develop a logo identity, positioning statement and the brand standards guide are things that we have been contracted to do and that we'll be moving forward with. Creating other priorities and funnel projects, you know. If there's anything in these recommendations or anything else that the town's seeing, you know, what is it, how does it prioritize and what are going to be the next steps for getting it done? The budget needs and funding opportunities. Money doesn't grow on trees, as they say, and so this is going to be something that will be needing to be addressed. And timelines for implementation, not really just for implementation, but moving into the next step is the performance goals and evaluation. You know, we mentioned celebrating successes. You know, these timelines help you have a date that you can celebrate the completion of this phase or knowing the goals to measure how you're succeeding. You know, those are so important to encourage the community and keep that spirit alive. Now I'll turn it over to Emily to talk about the last conclusions.
I mean, like Blake said, you know, monitoring your results and remaining proactive. As we talked about celebrating the small successes, you know, whether it's through the community newsletter or however we're showing people results, we know you guys are working hard to do a lot of things and some people might just not see the smaller accomplishments. And so monitoring those results, sharing those results and keeping people future-focused and optimistic about what's happening, we see is really important for building the brand and building momentum. And then something to consider, Blake talked about having measurement metrics. We could talk about that a bit in terms of, there's a variety of things that you could measure depending upon what you're looking, what tactic you're trying to gauge success for. But completing a smaller follow-up assessment is definitely something to strongly consider. You know, the community survey, really that was a way for people to tell us their thoughts and a lot of them, a handful of them said, we really hope that, you know, our comments are heard and that we know that not necessarily everything is going to happen that we're suggesting, but they really appreciated being able to weigh in and hoped that they could contribute something. It would be really great to, if some steps are taken in two to three years, to repeat that survey and to see if some people's perceptions have changed, to see if we've moved the needle a little bit in certain areas that we've made our goals, you know, whether that's in the area of community pride or the family-oriented events, if people think that has improved, you know. Just identifying those areas and completing a follow-up assessment could be something that would really help you, again, celebrate success and show progress. So we always conclude with the brand building is never done. You're always building your brand. You started long before today making decisions that would create who you are as a community. But continuing to do that, reevaluating it and really doing it with purpose, like we talked about today, whether you subscribe to the essence that we shared or whether you have some slight changes or additions that you'd like to share with us, just having a defined purpose and knowing who you are and consistently communicating that and being laser-focused about what that is will translate to powerful results for your community, for any community. So we, I guess we'll take any questions or comments, but we really appreciate the opportunity to do this, we sincerely enjoy doing it. And yeah, we've got some hikers and some shoppers that will be back. But we're, I mean, we're open to any questions you might have, we're just under the 90-minute mark.
Well, we received a copy of the raw data from the survey as well. I'd love to have an opportunity.
Yep, we have an addendum that has all the open-ended comments. And can give you an electronic copy of both that and.
So do you guide us on the next steps? I'm sitting here thinking this is awesome. So what do we do as a community now to see that this, oh, whatever we want to do happens?
Well, what we'd really like to do, I mean, depending upon how you decide to move forward with, you know, we talked about having our, if we continue with our committee of three or whatever, but the decision-makers, I mean, we would really like you, Blake mentioned a couple times, but to take a closer look at the data and things you weren't able to see on the screen, just to sit with it a bit and talk amongst yourselves. And then we would like to reconvene with a smaller group outside of here. I mean, we do see moving into the brand identity and positioning to start to form that vision and the brand standards guide that can help keep everything on track. We're planning to do that, but really want to just have some follow-up dialogue to make sure that we continue on the right track for you all and that we have buy-in. Because obviously that's critical to make sure that people are seeing.
How long a time period would you like before you move into the next?
Really, we can move into it almost immediately. So it's really up to you how long you want to sit with this information and we would just suggest, whether even if it's just a phone call to kick off the next phase. But, you know, in one to two weeks, we can really start work on those other pieces.
Two weeks?
You know, Emily, I find it interesting that we go back to the Chautauqua and because of all the technology and everything that you have and trying to recruit a workforce for the businesses that we currently have, and people are always looking for more jobs, we can't fill the ones we currently do, is to go back and find something historical like the Chautauqua. like the Chautauqua Building. And the reason I'm saying this is because we're working with other communities in the region. Take Walnut, for instance, they are suffering tremendously because people aren't into antiques and stuff the way they used to do. So I'm apprehensive about using the historical aspect, thinking that we're going to continue to draw on new people. I'd like to hear your take on, and certainly we've had tons of activities in the Chautauqua Building in the past, we just haven't edited the last few years. So there's ways to have plays and musicals and Barb had to do the Chautauqua singers for how many years?
Eighteen.
But, we're not counting, right?
It's a good question.
But anyway, there are ways to do that. It just, it concerns me about moving forward with...
Yep, and we actually had a lot of discussion about that. And I think there's a couple of things, and Blake, feel free to jump into, but I think we're using Chautauqua movement in a couple of ways. One, the historical aspect, the way we see it is more the lifestyle element. So it's being able to connect with your family. Blake talks about, you know, the outdoor movie nights or whatever. Really, the idea of that is to reconnect with, you know, to, if you're all sitting at home watching a movie, someone's on their phone, someone, it's, you're not connecting the same way. So just offering some authentic experiences that are unique from the other things that all of the other communities are doing, just because you have that connection to the arts and to those pillars in terms of a lifestyle that you can conquer. Because when people are moving out of big cities, we see it as people are looking for, they're still looking to be connected, don't get me wrong, but they're looking for a different lifestyle than they had in the city, a bit of a slower pace. I mean, that's what people said, that the biggest thing that they liked most about living in SAC City, I think, was the small-town atmosphere or something to that effect. So the lifestyle element is where we see it coming in. But then embracing those pillars as really forward-thinking ideas in terms of the spirit of, I mean, really the spirit of that movement was, like, it was a lot of entrepreneurism, I mean, in terms of what people were doing, you know, even the performers, they were, yeah, I mean, there was a spirit associated with it that we see applying to the future. And it's really, it's really going to be critical that it's communicated properly, no doubt, that people aren't feeling like, oh, we're, it's an old community and we're just hitching our wagon to this building. It's not a building, you know, it's definitely a bigger concept and spirit that we're, that we feel that is interesting, that would be really interesting to people.
And I know we talked a lot about, you know, the speakers that can come, you know, the Chautauqua movement, that was a big thing. It was really a forum to talk about the social issues of the day.
It was entertainment.
It was entertainment, but there was, I mean, it was, entertainment with a purpose. I mean, early on it, it was really with a purpose of showing, you know, it's a political debate, it's a social debate, like what's going on in our small-town communities. I mean, that was, that was the question, how do we form a good, strong, healthy community? And so, you know, we could see some thought leaders coming in and talking about this. The network that's set up through the Chautauqua Trails and in Chautauqua, New York, where it originated, they have all kinds of...
We all know the history, trust us, but just people look at the building and go, what the hell is that? You know, that's the part we don't want to have out there.
Right. And we did talk, I mean, what if a tornado came and knocked the building down?
Yeah.
You know, so it's less about the buildings, but more about the spirits.
Should we be thinking about setting up a committee, you know, getting them started early on while you're active in this process and thinking of a good cross-sectional, you know, set of people, you know, to do this? Other communities that have done this, what have they utilized a committee set up right away for this purpose or, and maybe even to meet with you folks and kind of go over some of the things, you know, what the committee should be doing, if you think that's something that we need to adopt early on?
Yeah, definitely. We talked about that a little bit with Adam and Barb and Brandy. It's, we definitely want to make sure all of the views are represented. So however you all see that happening in the best possible way is something that we are open to. We don't want to be presenting things to you that aren't being appropriately reviewed, you know, by the proper channels. The one thing that we do try to suggest is that we have found in, especially in community branding, that there can be dissension among the committee and it can cause issues with progress if there's a lot of disagreement about the direction. We know that there'll be constructive criticism and conversation, but making sure that it's the size of the committee or the amount of decision-makers doesn't become a hindrance to the process is just something to consider.
I know in the state of New York, the term Chautauqua is common.
I don't know offhand what the copyright is.
In terms of using it in marketing materials?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't, we didn't, we came across a lot of competitor marketing materials that were using the word.
I mean, I don't know. I know that the Chautauqua movement in Chautauqua, New York is pretty, is very sensitive to other people in New York using that name. I know that there have been some lawsuits filed because of that, but I didn't know that was a nationwide of...
We haven't come across that in our research. It seems like it was being used, like with the Chautauqua Trail Network and stuff, and then you click into communities, there was a lot of, I don't know if you're talking about the term Chautauqua or the phrase Chautauqua movement, maybe, is what's sensitive? Or is it the term Chautauqua?
Just the term Chautauqua itself.
Yeah, there's a variety of communities, like we talked about, trying to revive their local buildings and have events. So we didn't, we didn't, we weren't sensitive to that one. Something to explore.
I remember two years ago or whenever you did your first presentation here, that council voted for the first two, I believe you had five steps of what, and mentioned that doing one and two and not doing three, four, and five would be foolish. Do you feel that the community is committed to do five?
Well, at this time, we do just have commitment on the first two stages. So, you know, those foundation elements, a lot of those were in those stages, three, four, and five. And I know when we talked, there was some suggestion that it might not necessarily be us leading every single project, that there may be like a local web developer or signage person or something that maybe we would be consulting with or working with. I think that was maybe some of the discussion we had as well, that was maybe limiting you all to sign up with us for all five stages. I'm not exactly sure, but to this date, I mean, we've only had discussion about the first two stages. So we would, we would definitely encourage everyone to be looking forward at things like a website and those projects, which would benefit, again, from a committee, I suppose.
It's your website, a boilerplate from Iowa League or something? I would like that for a while. Most of mine.
And we know the chamber, you know, Brandy, we know you all are taking on some initiatives too. So, you know, we feel strongly that regardless of who we work with, that your voice is represented because of the importance of consistency and collaboration in that respect. So we don't want there to be a lot of overlap. I mean, in the past, we have developed, in one community, I think we talked about this early on, Forest City was an example of an extensive assessment that we did. And we did end up developing the same look and feel, but there was a website for the chamber and a website for the city. In other instances, there's just a single website. So there's not a...
Might be a time for me to share with you all, but the design of our website, we went with a historical feel. So it's kind of interesting to hear what you guys are suggesting and what we did decide to go with and what others thought too. That's what we should do.
Okay, so do you want to contact them to set up the next meeting in like no more than two weeks? And you will leave the information to Perouse between now and then?
Yeah, we have some lead behinds, but then Adam will go ahead and mail you the electronic documents in the morning. So you have those to share.
And is that available too, Canaan?
It's publicly copyrighted. The moment it hits us.
Yes.
Yeah.
So will you let us know how we can access that?
Sure.
Couldn't you, couldn't we check it out here since there's, there are limited copies?
No, I mean, electronic.
Oh, electronic, sorry.
Can't we just, is it a PDF? What are we getting? Can't we just put the PDF on the city's website?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, that'd be great.
That'd probably make the most sense.
Make it easy to access. And then put up the information that it's available.
And I'll send it out to our newsletter.
Our newsletter.
And I'll put it on Facebook too.
Get some more people looking at it.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Very, very interesting.
It's a very fun process to do.
We owe you another, well, if you really take that forward, that must be two of them. I have to come over there and...
I'll be there this week, so I can get some...
Well, sometimes you just let it, you don't forget it, you know, eventually.
Thank you very, very, very much. If you guys don't want to stay, we just have one thing left on the agenda. Feel free to go.
I have to walk.
The next thing is, we are, we are striking from the agenda, the projects, because it was just, we just received it today and did not have time to read it or look through it or anything. So it will be on the very next one. It was like four o'clock this afternoon when it finally came.
You were in my office.
Yeah, so there hasn't been time to even look through it. So, sorry, can't do anything about it. That's why they got it to us. So we'll move on to three, which is consideration of resolution number 2014-15, Retire, amended rules of procedure for conduct of city business SAC City, Iowa.
This incorporates all of the red items we had from last time and the discussion that went on on Thursday. So if you had yours from, and we're attending the meeting, Gary, for the most part, just so, I know you went at the meeting on last Thursday, just to let you know, kind of, just briefly what the main change was, was two-point, the main change was 2.04 of the agreement that would not have been originally included on the, one copy you had. And it, for the most part, spells out exactly how the Des Moines system is set up, with the exception that under one, it kind of narrowed the explanation under number one, so it wasn't so opening. So it was a little more clearly identified when those, that those aren't being used.
What page is that list on?
That's page on six and then on page eight, 2.09 G is...
I know there's a list.
That's so on each sheet, very true.
2.0...
Page six and seven.
Page eight.
Six and eight. No, that's not...
On page eight, 2.09 letter G.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
It continues on to page nine.
Okay, unless otherwise provided by statute or the resolution, all votes shall be taken using the power order of procedure. Announcement of topic, introduction, open discussion, motion second, and final discussion. Call for a vote, vote and declaration of results. And we did add after the second motion, a final discussion point in there to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we get all the questions answered. So that's how we will proceed.
I would move a passage of resolution number 2014-15 as presented to you.
I'll second it. Motion has been made to second it to pass resolution number 2014-15, amended rules of procedure for conduct of city business SAC City, Iowa. Are there any final questions or discussion?
Just some final discussion, you know, for the other folks that are here. We did, as the council, take some time to go through this. We have our meetings at the fourth Thursday of the month. And we did go through this with a fine-tooth coma, kind of discussed it and came up with, you know, and especially this, what we're talking about with regard to the motion and then a final discussion, to make sure that all council members are heard and given adequate deliberation. So we're not acting, let's say, without, you know, real consideration for what we have in front of us and as to preclude anyone from rewriting something through. So, and, you know, lastly, I'd just like to make sure that, you know, that when we in-service these other city council members taking office in the future, that it be really impressed on them that they should go through all of these procedures. You know, this is the very basics of what you need to know going into the city council. I'm not saying this is the only thing, but one of the very basic procedures of understanding that. So going through this procedure certainly helped me, who I've been on the council for, you know, five, over five years now, just to understand exactly what procedures we're doing and defining how we're working, I think is going to make us work more efficiently.
It's funny you make that comment, Bill, because this was developed in 2011 as a result of the development of orientations, that we felt like we needed something that written out to explain to new elected officials what the procedures were, what the processes were. And, I mean, even with us trying to work through some changes the last few months, I think that this has definitely been something advantageous for new council members coming in. I really do.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for one.
Councilperson Bruny? Yes. Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruny?
Yes.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
If there's no further business, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you like to discuss it?
Councilperson Bruny?
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Councilperson Bruny?
Yes.
We are adjourned.